Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of June 2nd, 2025. Please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call the vote.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Green Osuaya.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Hermio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the journals of the regular meetings of May 12th and May 19th?
Some move.
All favor, all opposed. Accepted.
Calendar item number four, the 2025 George V. Kallala Academic Achievement Awards will be presented to the top performing 5th and 8th graders in the city of Revere.
Counselor Argenzio.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Keefe, President Silvestri, members of the City Council, Dr. Diane Kelly, Superintendent of Schools, recipients, principals, and recipients' families, welcome to the George Kallala Academic Achievement Awards. I first want to thank the President and members of the City Council for once again hosting the awards ceremony and showcasing these talented students for achieving academic excellence in the public schools of the city of Revere. And personally, I'm honored to be here. Judge Kallala and I are related to each other, so I'm happy to represent the family. I would like to take a moment to thank former Superintendent of Schools and School Committee Member Carol Ty for guiding this awards program and acting as mistress of ceremonies for 10 years. Carol's dedication to the education of young people of Revere is legendary, and her personal educational partnership with Mayor Kallala benefited all of the students of Revere. We wish to express to Carol our thanks for shepherding the awards program from the beginning for a decade. The Mayor George V. Kallala Academic Achievement Awards are presented annually to outstanding students in recognition of their excellence in academics and citizenship. One award recipient is selected from each of the six elementary schools and from the three middle schools in the Revere Public School System. Each of this evening's nine recipients will receive a $200 reward and an honorary certificate in recognition of their achievements. Thus far, including tonight's recipients, 99 students will have received the awards in the 11 years of the program, amounting to over $16,000 in award honorariums. Mayor Kallala conceived the awards program and arranged for the personal funding of the program just months before he passed away in 2010. While his accomplishments as Mayor of Revere are numerous, his foremost personal legacy was in providing the best quality education for the young people of our city. He played a major role in the planning, financing, constructing, and completing the current Lincoln School, the first Wayland School, the current Revere High School, Garfield School, and the Beauchamp School. While serving in elected public office, he was instrumental in bringing about the majority of Revere's current public schools. He sincerely believed in what one of our founding fathers, Benjamin Franklin, said, that investing in education pays the best interest. We hope that their early education pays the best interest for these award recipients tonight. To our award recipients, we ask that you continue striving for educational excellence, keep up the good work, and sometime in the future, when you have graduated from college and achieved great success in your chosen professions, that you can remember your early education in Revere, and maybe you might talk to the Revere students and tell the next generation of Revere students that their hard work on their early education may also pay great interest for them. I'd like to now introduce Dr. Diane Kelly, Superintendent of the Revere Public Schools, for the presentation of the awards. Do you want to come up?
Thank you so much, Counselor Argenzio, and I can affirm for you that all of the recipients of the George V. Kallala Award this year are worthy and live up to the expectations of what Mr. Kallala had in mind when he created this program so many years ago. As you mentioned, Mr. Kallala, Mayor Kallala, Counselor Kallala, School Committee Member Kallala was a champion of young students, and he felt that we needed to do more in the early years when students are leaving elementary school or middle school to encourage them to continue to work with a strong work ethic that they've already demonstrated through high school and through college. And so we have tonight, our principals have worked with the teachers of these students to put together a profile of each one of them, and I'm going to invite each of the principals up one at a time to tell us a little bit more about the accomplishments that these young people have made already in their short lives, and then we'll invite each student up for their award. And Mayor Keefe as well.
Mayor Keefe, would you like to come up and make us some statement?
Counselor Argenzio, in honorable body, Dr. Kelly. I just wanted to give a brief synopsis. Typically, we have the grace of Carol Ty, school committee woman, former superintendent, to come up here and give a little bit of a brief summary of the awards. I'm so thankful that Counselor Argenzio is passing on that tradition to the entire council. This is a very important award, and later on tonight, we're going to talk about the community awards. Almost every year when we do a community award, a former Kallala recipient receives it. Even though the last few years, believe it or not, some of the funding to help continue this award was given in donation by former Mayor Brian Arigo. And we've all committed, now I'm the next mayor, we've all committed to make sure that that funding is still solidified for years to come and continue to honor Mayor Kallala. But I do want to mention, Carol Ty will say this, and I just want, I have to say this. She always talks about readers are good writers, and writers are good readers, and she always does a little bit more, a little bit extra on top of the community award. She's a special person in our community and is champion for so much that we're very thankful. And I know all of these recipients are going to get one of the best, you know, forms of recognition from their principals. Very well deserved, so I look forward to seeing them tonight. Thanks for having me here. And, counsel, thank you for continuing to keep on this tradition and invite the families up here. Thank you.
So first, I'd like to invite up Principal Fryzen from the Beauchamp School.
All right. Good evening. My name is Chris Fryzen, and I'm the proud principal of the Beauchamp Veterans Memorial School. I'm joined by Marty Katab and Christine Anderson, who are two of our 5th grade teachers. I want to take a moment to thank the mayor and the City Council for continuing the George Kallala Academic Achievement Award and recognizing the hard work of these incredible students. I am honored to name Juliette Calderon Tejada as the Beauchamp 5th grade recipient of this award. Juliette exemplifies what it means to be a Beauchamp Bee. At the hive, all students strive to be respectful, responsible, safe, and kind. Juliette has been that student since kindergarten in our building. Not only does she excel in the classroom, but she's involved in so many of our extracurricular activities, including being a peer leader. She's in the chess club, the running club, the math league, the steam club, and choral club. Did I miss anything? I'm sure I did. She's too modest. Here are some words from some of her teachers. Juliette has a passion for learning. She has a rich vocabulary and always interested in learning new words. She is a leader, and her hard work is done with precision. She is positive and always willing to help others. Juliette asks questions and is always looking for different strategies to solve problems. Mr. Avila, her 5th grade ELA teacher, told me that in September she showed interest in Shakespeare and began reading his college anthology of Shakespeare. Juliette is excited to attend the RMA and wants to continue to stay involved in extracurricular activities outside of the classroom. She wants to get involved with the volleyball program as well. When we met last week to discuss the award, I asked her, where does she see herself in 15 years? She responded, I don't know if it's still the same way, that she wants to be a math teacher or a surgeon. She wants to study medicine, and if that doesn't work out, she'll be a great math teacher in the Revere Public Schools. We are so very proud of Juliette and all that she has accomplished in her time at the Beauchamp School, and very special for her family to be here with us tonight as well. So congratulations to Juliette.
Do you want to bring the family up? Yeah, yeah, come on now, come on down. Guys, want to get in? Families coming. Brother? Come on, right up here, pal.
Come on in, Jeff. I'm coming.
You're good, you're good.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to invite up Principal Martel from the Hill School.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Martel. I'm the principal of the Hill School, and I'm joined with 5th grade teachers Maggie McAllister, Nadia Salvatore, and Assistant Principal Anne McLaughlin. Today is our great honor and absolute joy to recognize and celebrate an outstanding student, George Fotiades. George is a 5th grader here at the Hill, but in truth, he has always carried himself with the heart and responsibility of someone well beyond his years. From the moment he walks into a room, you can feel his energy, his kindness, and his determination. George shows us all what it truly means to lead with integrity, compassion, and hard work. George is a shining example of diligence, always putting his best foot forward, not just in his schoolwork, but in everything he takes on, whether it's his role in the school play, his service on the student council, or simply being the first to help a teacher carry supplies or clean up a classroom. George approaches every task with a commitment and a smile. George is trilingual, speaking Greek and English fluently and understanding Albanian as well, an incredible reflection of his heritage and his curiosity about the world around him. It's no surprise that he dreams of becoming an engineer one day, building houses and making a difference with his hands and his heart. George, thank you for showing us what it means to be a thoughtful friend, a determined student, and inspiring leader. Wherever you go, we know you'll continue to build not just houses, but a brighter future for everyone lucky enough to know you. Congratulations, George.
Thank you.
Congratulations, George.
Next, we'll invite Principal Sermon from the Lincoln School.
Does your family want to come up?
Does our family want to come up now?
Does your family want to?
Where does our family come up?
Good evening, everyone. I am Principal Sermon. It is my absolute honor to stand before you today to present one of the most prestigious recognitions our school offers. The award is presented to the student who not only achieves the highest grades in each core subject, but also continues to shine in every corner of our school. Whether it's art class, gym, or even wind block, this year, that extraordinary student is Tavleen. Tavleen is the definition of going above and beyond. Her excellence in the classroom is just the beginning. She participates in after-school programs like the writing club, chorus, always bringing her creativity and enthusiasm to everything she does. Her talents don't stop there. This year, the artwork was even featured in our school's talent show. But Tavleen's dedication didn't just start this year. In 3rd grade, she earned an award from the state for a perfect MCAS score. In 4th grade, she received an award for completing ST Math journey. Every year, she shows us what determination and joy in learning looks like. She even comes by every day when she sees me and gives me a high five. Anytime she sees me, "Mr. Sermon, where's my high five?" Every time. Not only are her academic excellence, Tavleen is an active and passionate classroom participant. She consistently displays acts of good citizenship by settling, setting positive examples, working hard and showing kindness to everyone. She's a dedicated contributor who gives her time and energy. Outside of school, Tavleen continues to amaze us. She's taken her passion for writing and turned it into something truly special. In her free time, she writes and illustrates children's books. Tavleen, your talents, your drive, and your heart inspires all of us. You're not only a high achiever, you are a role model, a leader, and a shining example of what it means to make the most of every opportunity. Congratulations, Tavleen, and in the future, she would love to be a doctor, and we know she will.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite up Principal Coyle from the Paul Revere School.
Come on up, family.
Come on up.
Joya, how about you come stand right over here? You're going to fill it in.
Sure.
Is there room?
There's plenty of room, don't worry. Come right on in. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Bo Coyle. I'm the principal of the Paul Revere School. Excited to be here tonight to celebrate Joya Sharafa. She is the recipient of our Kallala Award for this year. Her teachers have written a little bit about her, and I'd like to share some. So Joya is a remarkable 5th grade student. She is being honored for her exceptional academic performance, meaningful social involvement, outstanding leadership in our school community. She consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic, curiosity for learning, and a passion for helping others. Joya is a member of our 5th grade leadership team. That's a special group of students that have to receive nominations from teachers to be able to participate. They put on the different events that happen throughout the school, look at different fundraisers, do all kinds of really great stuff. Joya is a remarkable student, classmate, and friend. She is always eager to help others and approach every task with a positive attitude. Each morning, she volunteers her time to assist a 2nd grade English learner with his numbers and math facts, patiently guiding him with a smile. Her diligence and willingness to support her classmates, combined with her genuine eagerness to learn, make her a natural leader in the classroom. Joya's kindness, work ethic, and cheerful disposition inspire everyone around her, and she truly embodies the qualities of a role model and leader. All that being said, her contributions have made a lasting impact on both her classmates and her teachers. We are proud to celebrate Joya and all that she brings for our school. So how about her, Joya?
Next, we're going to invite up Assistant Principal Belucci, who's going to present for the AC Wayland School.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of our principal, Ms. Shanley, who isn't able to be here tonight, thank you so much for having us here and allowing us to celebrate a wonderful student in Ariana. It is an absolute honor to stand here tonight to celebrate a truly remarkable young person like Ariana. If you've ever wondered what hope, resilience, and quiet strength look like, you don't need to look any further than Ariana. When asked what keeps her going, even when things get tough, she said something that really stayed with me. She said, "I'm doing it for myself, not for anyone else, so I can be successful in the future. I like doing things beyond my limits." That kind of self-awareness and motivation is rare at any age, and Ariana shows us every day what it looks like to stay focused on your goals while lifting up others along the way. Ariana finds joy in reading, strength in her family, purpose in helping others, and courage in facing challenges head-on. She took on the new science MCAS and walked out of it proud. She leads not by raising her voice, but by raising the people around her. She listens, she encourages, and she sets an example. As she put it, "Being a leader means showing patience, respect, and kindness." And she lives those values every day. She's the kind of student who reminds us why we teach, and as she sets her sights on Harvard, whether to become a psychologist, a lawyer, or maybe even author of several bestsellers, I just want to say this, if I am ever in trouble, I know exactly who I am calling. Ariana, we are so proud of you. Congratulations on this well-deserved daughter.
And next, I'd like to invite Dr. Napier, principal of the Garfield Elementary School, with his student and their family.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and Dr. Kelly, and these wonderful scholars that you see before you. My name is Dr. Percy Napier. I'm principal of the Garfield Elementary School. I would like to thank all of those who have helped to revive this award, which is one of the most visible ways that we have of recognizing and encouraging excellence early in our students' academic journey. I would also like to thank all of our Garfield teachers who have played a role in shaping our students' journey. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce the Kallala Award winner for the Garfield Elementary School, Fartoon Castani. At Garfield, we believe in setting clear expectations for our students, not just about what's expected, but about what's possible. Every day, our students hear about making what's good today better tomorrow, about being respectful, responsible, safe, and kind. And every now and then, a student comes along who doesn't just meet those expectations, they quietly and confidently raise the bar for everyone around them. The young lady standing beside me is a perfect example of the level of excellence our students can demonstrate. On the 4th grade MCAS, Fartoon scored at the highest levels in reading and math. In fact, her reading level is beyond what is expected for a high school senior, and her math achievement is on par with 8th graders. But beyond the numbers, what truly sets Fartoon apart is her character and curiosity. Her teachers describe her as inquisitive, witty, empathetic, and a loyal friend, the kind of student you are proud to teach. She has a deep passion for learning, especially writing, because it gives her the freedom to express herself in new and creative ways. She's also a talented visual artist with a particular love for watercolor landscapes and florals. She enjoys writing stories, poetry, and song lyrics, experimenting with different styles as she works to shape her voice as a writer. Not surprisingly, Fartoon would like to become an author, and I have read some of her work, and I'm pretty confident. and I'm pretty confident in a few years, you all will too. Congratulations, Fartoon.
And now we'll move on to our middle school awards, and I'd like to begin with Principal Bob, if you could come up for the Remney Marsh Academy.
Good evening, Mayor Keefe, Committee, Dr. Kelly, and the community of Revere. I'm Heather Bobb. I'm the principal at the Remney Marsh Academy. And in selecting a recipient for this award, we, the committee and I, thought deeply about the values of our school, which are respect, motivation, and achievement. And I could not think of a better recipient that embodies all three of those school values. Narin came to the Revere Public Schools directly from La República Dominicana in Grade 5 as a multilingual learner. She now sits in 8th grade as a top honors-level student in ELA. She is a voracious reader. She's currently reading Twilight in her free time. She is a caring, committed, wonderful young lady who helped us lead the charge as a school. We've been working on attendance, and it's fitting because Narin has missed zero school days this year. She's supercommitted to her education. She has perfect attendance and has been the voice and has presented to our community on the power of her presence and how that's important for being a productive member of school every single day. She is responsible. She is extremely humble. I think she was very surprised to be selected for this award, though it comes to no surprise to anybody that knows her. We are extremely proud and honored to present Narin with the Mayor Colella Award tonight.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite up Principal Willette, with her student and their family, from the Susan B. Anthony Middle School.
Does his family wanna come up?
Yeah.
Sure, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Willette, principal at the Susan B. Anthony Middle School. And it is with great pride that we recognize Tyler Pham, an 8th grade student at the Susan B. Anthony Middle School, as the recipient of the George V. Colella Academic Achievement Award. Tyler is an exceptional student who approaches his studies with curiosity, focus, and integrity. He consistently demonstrates a deep commitment to learning, completing assignments with care, and striving for excellence in all academic areas. He earned the highest star scores in both Math and ELA, scoring in the 99th and 98th national percentiles respectively, and consistently exceeds expectations on MCAS assessments in both subjects. Tyler is not only thoughtful and thorough in his work, he is also persistent, always willing to revisit a challenge and approach it with new strategies and determination. What truly sets Tyler apart, however, are the values he brings to our school community every day. He is humble, kind, and generous with his time, always willing to support classmates and contribute positively to the learning environment. His confidence is quiet but steady, grounded in a strong work ethic, and his willingness to grow. It has been a genuine pleasure to witness Tyler's growth this year. We are incredibly proud of his achievements and look forward to all that he will accomplish in the years ahead. Congratulations, Tyler.
Our final award for the night is for our student from Garfield Middle School. Principal King has been trying to get here but is stuck in traffic. So I'm gonna invite Marco up. He's here. Marco's pretty. No, he must be in traffic too. All right, well, we will definitely pass the words on that Marco's teachers wrote about him, so the council can have that for their application, and I'll be sure to get this award to him as well. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, everyone. It's our pleasure.
Next up is calendar item number five. The recipients of the 2025 City of Revere Community Scholarships will be presented with certificates of achievement.
Rose, mayor?
Mr. President, I know Rose Burns is up there to talk a little bit more about this scholarship. I just wanted to thank the committee. Rose is gonna take, Rose has taken on the responsibility to organize the committee each year. They go through a thorough process, as mentioned. A lot of these former Colella Awards recipients tend to be the Revere Community Scholarship recipients. And just so everyone's aware, all of your taxpayers, when you get your tax bills in the mail every quarter, they, there is a box you can check and contribute $1, $5, $10. You can contribute to this fund. It has been well-funded for many years. As a matter of fact, I talked a little earlier about a former mayor funding the Colella Awards. We had the former former mayor help fund this award as well with some generous donations. So thank you, former Mayor Rizzo. And then I did wanna thank the committee. Rosie Burns, who's the chair, Richard Viskey, our city auditor, Jacqueline Monterosso on the school committee, Diane Kelly, Katie Schultz-Graham, who's also on the Board of, the Library Board, Joseph Gravellisi, and Diane Finn. They all serve on this board who make the selections. I was very proud to see the names of these selections because these are students you all probably know very well. They've done a really great job in our community. I'll let Rosie make the full announcements, but I'm very proud of each and every one of them, and they're all gonna be going off to great institutions next year. So congratulations to the winners. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the introduction. Hi, everyone. My name is Rose. I am Mayor Keefe's aide, and I am also the chair of the Revere High School Scholarship Committee. I first wanted to just talk a little bit about the scholarship and what it means. So this is part of Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 3C. Taxpayers can voluntarily check off and donate to this fund. So first and foremost, we'd like to say thank you to everyone that has contributed to the fund and makes this possible every year. So the voting committee considers applicant's financial need, character, scholastic record, involvement in community work, as well as extracurriculars and school activities. This year, we were able to give four graduates from Revere High School $2,000 each to put towards their college tuition or other college expenses. So I'm going to make this short and sweet. Without further ado, I'd first like to bring up Jordan Martelli. She will be attending Merrimack College for forensics. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next I would like to invite up Ava Casanello, who will be attending Stonehill College for Communication Disorders. Congratulations.
Congrats, Mom.
Thank you.
You wanna come up here? Go ahead.
All right. Next, we have Suzie Nicholas, who will be attending Suffolk University for Business. She cannot make it tonight, but we will make sure that the citation gets to her. And finally, we have Yanni Patel, who will be attending MCPHS for nursing. That's all. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. Back to the regular order of business.
Next up is calendar item number six. Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control and Wetlands Management will give a presentation on the services offered and answer any questions relative to prevention, personal protection, education, and outreach.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. We're gonna make a bit of a pivot here. I'm Lauren Buck. I'm the Director of Public Health. I have Barry and Kim here with me. The purpose of tonight's presentation is that you all become a little bit more familiar with the mosquito management program that happens in Revere every summer, but we wanted to give you a little bit of a talk about, just to make sure that you all know the details of it. I'm gonna fly through a presentation. I'm not the expert in the subject, obviously, and then Barry and Kim will answer any questions that you have and also potentially give a little bit more detail to any areas that they see fit. So like I said, I'm Lauren, Barry, and Kim, and we're gonna go to the next slide. We're gonna talk about mosquito management here. So Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control and Wetlands Management District, they are our partners in all things mosquito here in Revere. Barry is the district director. Kim is the entomologist. Rob and Jennifer and Steven are also part of the team. I put their website on the slide as well and the phone number. Oh, can you go back one slide? Sorry. And just a quick review of kind of where we are and why mosquitoes are a problem in Revere. We sit on a huge marshland, and that's why we're always gonna have mosquitoes. Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito does a great job of, you know, individually can do to make sure that they're protecting themselves against mosquitoes. Things like avoid going out at dusk and dawn when mosquitoes are most active, wearing protective clothing, long sleeve, long layers, to make sure that your skin is covered, using insect repellent, specifically CDC-approved insect repellent, staying in a place with air conditioning and window screens, and removing standing water at home. Those are all things that individuals can do to have control over their own personal protection. Next slide. Okay. So, Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito, the overview of all the work they do, not only in the summer, but throughout the entire year. There's a couple of different buckets. Larvae sighting, which happens in catch patients and in general, from late May to early June. They also help us run their mosquito arboriviris surveillance program, which runs from May to September. There's also supplemental surveillance program that's deployed after the first positive West Nile virus, or triple E detection, in any municipality. They do property inspections upon request, habitat mitigation, and then adulticide, which I think is what we're most commonly, we know about when we see their trucks going through the city. There's barrier treatments, there's Board of Health requests, and there's resident requests, all of which we will talk about. Next slide. So, Revere, for the last few years, has specifically done special barrier treatments at Revere Public School Properties, our fields, our parks. This is a very special type of treatment that Barry and Kim could probably talk about a little bit more in depth, but I just also wanted to let you know that we communicate with Carl Svensson and Mike Hinojosa to make sure we're planning these specific dates. Our first barrier treatment for the summer will be Monday, June 23rd, with a rain date of June 24th. And our second will be Monday, August 18th, with a rain date of August 19th. They can answer questions about what that means specifically, but just wanted to make sure you all were aware of those two dates. If you can go to the next slide. So, our residential property requests. This is for any resident who wants a spraying that's happening at their private property. Residents need to request their own property spraying weekly. Every week, if a resident wants a spray multiple weeks, they have to request it every single week. It could be canceled due to things like inclement weather, lack of mosquitoes, inaccessible properties, and residents will receive an email confirmation of the online request. The website I have put on the bottom of the, on the right-hand side in the, in the green box, it's www.nemassmosquito.org. Just for any residents out there and for councilors, the truck will come Thursday nights, 30 minutes, 30 minutes after sunset. Requests have to be made weekly, and they must be in by Wednesday at noon. There's some factors that could go into the truck actually coming by your property, but in general, it's Thursday nights, 30 minutes after sunset. And the next slide. So municipal properties, these are parks and fields. So in Revere, we have to, the Board of Health has to work with Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito to make these requests every week, which we do. They happen weekly from June to September. In Revere, our Public Health Department emails a list of public properties to Barry and Kim before Wednesday at noon, and those will start next, this week, on June 4th. So City Council can't directly request public property, they must flow through the Public Health Department. Any properties that you're thinking potentially need to get sprayed, they're probably already on our weekly spray list. We can always double-check it by calling our office or emailing us, but we are the ones who coordinate directly with Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito. I think I flew through that really quickly. I'm going to get, let Barry and Kim answer any questions, or, you can go, yeah, go to the next slide. Answer any questions that you have or elaborate on anything that I missed.
Thank you, Lauren. City Council.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, guys, for being here. Just a couple of questions. What chemicals are you using for the application? What type of application, and are they safe for pets?
Yes, so everything we use is EPA-regulated, registered, and then approved by the Mass Pesticide Board. Both the products that we talked about in that slideshow are synthetic pyrimethroids, which is from the persanthum flower, in which farmers used to put at the end of their rows to keep mosquitoes out of their crops. And so those are the two products we use. The barrier treatment is, puts a coating on vegetation. The adulticide is a ultra-low volume mist in which the sprayer is calibrated to 30 micron droplets, which are the precise size droplets to land on a mosquito to thus kill only a mosquito. And we have those calibrated every single year. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and to answer to the pets.
Oh, yes.
So, once it's applied, we usually have a waiting period, usually 15 minutes or so. And then they can reopen their windows, let their pets outside.
And there is no residual with the adulticide.
Perfect. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Guys, thanks so much for being here. Councilor Cogliandro touched on this a bit, but, and I believe you said a 15-minute grace period timeline. Is that true for the ball fields and any open space? I know Lauren said she was in touch with Mr. Hinojosa and Mr. Svensson from Direct Department and School Department, respectively, but is there a timeline? Is 15 minutes okay to go back on the fields, open the windows, like you said?
If it's only adulticide, that's the ultra-low volume mist. If we go in and do a barrier at night, that means we're coating the vegetation, reentry is only in the morning.
Okay, so more or less overnight?
Overnight it dries. That's, we need it to dry.
And it'll be safe for the residents and animals?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Argenzio.
Thank you for being here. If somebody requests their personal property, they give an address, you don't physically go onto the property, you pull up in a pickup truck with a fogger and fog in front of the house, and the wind takes it onto their property? Is that, does that sound right?
So what we do is we check it through our GIS system to make sure that they are the owner of the property. When the truck comes at night, they're all based with tablets that show, with a weather station built onboard. And what we can, we try to do is if we can back in their driveway, once we turn on the adulticide sprayer, it usually pushes it back maybe 100, 155 feet.
Okay.
And the reason everything has a weather station on it is because anything over 10 miles an hour or going in the wrong direction, we will not spray. Because the technician's license, to be a licensed applicator, he has to follow those rules. So.
Okay. Thank you.
We also, also with the GIS system, it shows property boundary lines, and we pay particular attention to those property boundary lines. There may be a spray exclusion in the area as well, so we can't let anybody know where those are, but we're, we have alarm systems that go off prior to the driving on the road that might have an exclusion next to the person that may have a request.
And exclusions are requested also?
Yes.
Okay. So if I live next to a house that has an exclusion, you probably won't be able to spray me, right? I can't imagine you could control it to that.
But it'd be all up to the technician, and the weather stations have greatly increased the probability of it.
Okay.
But it's in the night decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Janino.
Thank you. So if I'm getting this right, the spray itself, is it reactive only when the animals, the mosquitoes are out at night? So if the mosquito's not out there, you spray, it has no effect on anything else, right? It's just the active mosquitoes?
So when we adulticide, that's the micron droplet that's specifically dialed in for the size of a mosquito that'll kill a mosquito.
Like an oil-based spray, something like that?
I'm sorry?
Like an oil-based insecticide?
Um, it's not oil-based.
No, no. So the, the barrier treatments, there's those two different types of products. The barrier treatment that we use is made to have a residual that lasts. Once it's dry overnight, that'll stay for either 30 days or 60 days, sometimes 90, depending on which barrier treatment we're using. Once that product's dry, human, animals, birds can touch it, and it won't come off. It only affects mosquitoes and any other organism that may land on that product, but it has to also be the micron size that can be absorbed by the mosquito from landing on it. But that's, again, the barrier treatment that we use. The ULV, which is the ultra-low volume truck-based drive-by that only lasts 15 minutes, physically has to touch the mosquito in order to have it drop. So if it, if there's no mosquitoes out and we're doing a ULV truck-based spray, if there's nothing out, it won't, nothing will drop. It doesn't have a residual.
How about swimming pools?
I'm sorry?
Swimming pools, pools.
Swimming pools?
Yes.
I mean, if, if swimming pools, once it's in the water, it doesn't do anything unless you have fish like koi, and those residents need to let us know that they have that, and if they request spraying and they have koi, we recommend that they cover the little area, and then they can uncover it once we're gone 15 minutes after.
Yep. And just to add on, one more thing on that, basically, the label is the law, so can't spray under 50 degrees, 10 mile an hour winds, if it's rain, anything like that. It just voids the use, the application for the operator, and so, and that keeps us to, you know, held to the highest standard of applicating and killing mosquitoes.
And we also can't spray over river streams, lakes, ponds, any water at all. So we have to really be careful where this, the product is being targeted.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Garino Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, you said it's not going to affect a pool, but you can't spray over water? I don't, I don't get that.
Because water has fish.
Fish, or any organisms.
Wildlife.
But it's not, it doesn't affect any wildlife. So.
We can't make, due to the label, we can't make direct applications to water. Areas with, like, waters of the US, ponds, lakes, so waters of the US aren't swimming pools.
So how about vegetation? Like for, for example, like a dune? Can you spray over a dune? Can you spray over?
Well, the dune is probably adjacent to water on the ocean, so we can't.
At all? Okay.
And that's, and that's why we have the onboard weather stations, too, that really tells us the humidity, the wind direction, everything, so that we know when we turn on that machine, the application is going where it's supposed to.
And we have alarms for boundaries. So where the lakes and, you know, well water, 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 I can't even.
Drinking water.
Drinking water sites. So all these protective layers are in our system to avoid when we're using our products.
Will it affect, like, say, say you're spraying in someone's backyard, and they have a vegetable garden, would, would that ruin?
Not really.
Would that hurt people?
The product that we're spraying with the micron size that we have and the ultra-low volume is, with the temperature restrictions and the wind direction, the product, once it leaves the truck sprayer, it's made to loft up, not fall. So, because mosquitoes are in the air, not on the ground. So all our products are made with these specifications are made to loft up and then dissipate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, Councilor Garino Swaya stole my, my question, but we have a lot of community gardens around the city, and I just wanted to know, you know, if you're riding down the street, I wanted to know if they would be affected, and you answered the question. But also, how far does your spray go? Because we're also surrounded by beaches, marshes, little inlets of water. How far does your?
Roughly 150 feet.
150 feet?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Public hearings, calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending Chapter 8.05 of the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to the regulation of vacant buildings.
Any proponents? Anyone here in favor? Hearing none? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone here against? Closing that side. City councilors? None? Okay. This will be going to Legislative Affairs, June 16th.
Calendar item number eight. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending Chapter 12.20, poles, wires, and cables of the Revere Revised Ordinances.
Proponents? Anyone here in favor? Hearing none? Closing that side. Opponents? Anyone here against or opposed? Closing that side. City councilors? No? Okay. This will also be referred to Legislative Affairs, June 16th.
Calendar item number nine. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending Appendix C, salaries of the Revere Revised Ordinances, which provides for parity salary adjustments in concert with the recently approved Unit A and Unit B collective bargaining agreements.
Proponents? Anyone here in favor? Okay, hearing none? Opponents? Anyone here against? Closing that side. City councilors? Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support this.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Okay. This will also go to Legislative Affairs, June 16th.
Public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
If you're a resident of Revere, please come up. You have two minutes to speak on a motion, anything on the agenda tonight. Two minutes, please give your name, address, and the motion you'll be speaking on. Name and address for the record.
Don Martelli, 39 Dale Street, here to speak on motion on, item number 23, from Council Andrea Garino Swaya. I am also an appointed member of the Board of Trustees for the Public Library. I believe that a feasibility, feasibility study on the library and accessibility would be important for those that go to the library on a regular basis, our seniors, those with disabilities. The one caveat here is that we are discussing as a board a strategic planning process to understand how this would fit into the much larger scope of the library and its building. It's an historic building, so it's not as easy as just throwing in a ramp or an elevator, so it's pretty tricky. It's a pretty big monopoly piece we manipulate, so we, as the Board of Trustees, would support some level of support from the council here to look at what we could do, but we would hope to go after a public grants or other outside money to be able to support this, because we understand that the city has several things that you're in front of in terms of new school and other financial responsibilities. So we'd like to be able to work with the City Council on finding alternative solutions for budgeting things of this nature, but we definitely would support a feasibility study in some way, shape, or form, because we just know that the building is old, it's historic, it's a great place for, like, Brooks and Brews, but ultimately with accessibility, it can be kind of challenging for those that are young kids or seniors, so we welcome a review of this. So appreciate the time.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else here to speak? Two minutes, name and address, and motion. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Zoning Subcommittee Report.
Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item 25111 was voted out unfavorably, but I would like to ask for a roll call on the second reading.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
On a second reading, relative to the zoning ordinance amending the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to off-street parking. Councilor Argenzio.
No.
No? Councilor Cogliandro?
No.
No? Councilor Janino?
No.
No? Councilor Garino Swaya?
No.
No? Councilor Haas?
No.
No? Councilor Herramio?
No.
No? Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor McKenna?
No.
No? Councilor Novoselfsky?
No.
No? Councilor Zambudo?
No.
No? And Council President Silvestri?
No.
No? The zoning ordinance is defeated on the second reading.
Up next is 25-120, 250 Lee Burbank LLC, 20 Railroad, requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to enable the appellant to raise the existing building and build a new building. This was voted out favorably. I'd ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested, subject to the conditions of site plan review? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Herramio?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? And Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes? The special permit has been granted.
Next up is 25-149, Natalia Maria Cantino Gomez, 85 Arlington Street, number two, is requesting a special permit for a Class II auto license at 195 American Leachon Highway. This was also voted out favorably.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested, subject to the conditions of site plan review? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Garino-Suaya.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Next up is 25-150, New York Capital Investment Group, 500 Turnpike Street, Canton, Mass., requesting a special permit for a car wash at 350 Squire Road, Revere, Mass. Uh, this was also voted out favorably. I'd ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested, subject to the conditions of site plan review? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Garino-Suaya.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo is recused, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Next up is 25-124, a zoning ordinance further amending Title 17 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, establishing a definition for the use of food trucks. This was also voted out favorably. I would ask for a roll call.
Audit on a second hearing?
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Audit on a third and final hearing? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve a zoning ordinance establishing a definition in use for food trucks? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Garino-Suaya.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Next up is 25-151, an ordinance further amending Title 5 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere relative to food trucks. This time, I won't make that mistake, Mr. President.
Thank you, Consul. Audit on a second reading? Audit on a third and final reading? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance relative to food trucks concerning Title 5? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Garino-Suaya.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Communications, calendar item number 16. Communication from the CFO relative to the FY '26 Budget Appropriation Order.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, Honorable Body, I will not be impersonating the CFO tonight, but I will be speaking on behalf of this motion. Uh, there are a few communications in front of you. Uh, I'll speak, uh, just on this first one. Uh, we're proud to offer you the budget for the 2026, um, fi- fiscal year. Uh, as you can probably see, or I know you just got them this evening, you'll have some time. I want to, uh, say on behalf of the, the employees of the city, very thankful of the way that you're rolling out the budget presentations this, this year. Uh, they really enjoy that. It's a lot like a lot of other communities, so very thankful. Uh, but just giving credit to the city's, um, financial strength. We, uh, we were faced with a number of hurdles this year, including some, um, serious increases and some uncontrollables, things like health insurance premiums that have skyrocketed. Uh, and the city has been able to present you a balanced budget without any, uh, use of, uh, one-time rainy day funds and things like that, where a lot of surrounding communities have had to dip into that, uh, and still preserve the, uh, the integrity of what we do every day, uh, while continuing to invest in some serious areas like public safety and of course, education. So we're very proud of the budget that we, we are presenting to you, and we know that you'll put some, uh, thought and process into it. And I imagine that our, our great department heads will, uh, give you their synopsis and, and hopefully we'll get, uh, this budget fully approved by the end of the fiscal year. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this will be going to Ways and Means on Thursday. Oh, sorry. Consul Cogliandro.
Actually, I was just gonna, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I just want to let everyone up here know and everyone in the public that, that we have two days scheduled for the budget meetings. It's going to be this Thursday, as, uh, Council President said, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It'll also be Thursday, June 10th, oh, excuse me, Tuesday, June 10th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul.
And, Mr. President, the rest of the communications, I know that the CFO will be back. He's at a conference, he'll be back, uh, Thursday, and of course, he can speak on any of the other communications.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 17. Communication from the CFO relative to the FY '26 Revolving Funds Table.
Should be referred to Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 18. Communication from the CFO relative to the FY '26 Water and Sewer Rates.
Refer to Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 19. Communication from the CFO requesting a transfer in the amount of $60,000 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for the construction of a community garden in Beauchamp.
Mr. President?
Consul McKenna.
Thank you. Um, this is allotted for, um, the, uh, this is from my CIT fund, and this is allotted for a new community garden in Beauchamp. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul, and this will be ordered to a public hearing, June 23rd. Oh. Sorry, Madam Clerk, if you can roll call the vote.
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $60,000 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for the construction of a community garden in Beauchamp? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Garino-Suaya.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 20. Communication from the mayor relative to Phase 16 Construction, I&amp;I Capacity Improvement, Mass. DEP, calendar year 25, Construction Project Number 19086.
Okay. Now, this will be ordered to a public hearing on June 23rd.
Motions. Calendar item number 21. Motion presented by Consul Cogliandro, that the mayor be requested to enter into talks with National Grid regarding the installation of lighting on the current poles along Squire Road, which poles can handle a light installation, and what the cost would be to perform the work.
Consul Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the motion speaks for itself. Mastod does not control the lighting on Squire Road, we found out. And now, I would like to figure out what it will cost, uh, you know, to get the, to get more lighting. I think everybody knows we need it. Uh, and if I may, just give a quick update on the, the painting of the lines. Mastod, and I want to thank State Rep. Janino for starting this, but Mastod has said that, uh, it's on their list to get done ASAP. And so hopefully, we see some, some boundaries for our lanes on Squire Road soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22. Motion presented by Consul Garino-Suaya, that the mayor be requested, request the appropriate municipal departments, including but not limited to Planning and Community Development, Parks and Rec, and the Solicitor's Office, to conduct a comprehensive feasibility study to evaluate the installation of a basketball court at the corner of Dun Road and Shama Street. Should the site be determined unsuitable for such development, the study should alternatively consider the viability of revitalizing the existing park located at the corner of Nippon Street and Sagamore Street. Said study shall include, but not limited to, the following components. One, a determination of the ownership status of the subject parcels, including whether land is public or private. Two, an analysis of any applicable zoning regulations, land use policies, or environmental constraints that may affect potential development. Three, an assessment of the physical suitability of the locations for recreational use, including consideration of site dimensions, drainage, and proximity to abutting residential properties. Four, development of a preliminary cost estimate for the construction, as well as ongoing maintenance of such a facility. And lastly, a set of recommendations and next steps should the sites be deemed appropriate for recreational improvements.
Consul Garino-Suaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. This stemmed from residents of the neighborhood who reached out to me, um, about the need for a basketball court in that area. I've learned, um, that this idea was actually brought to my predecessor as well, but it fell through the cracks, and nothing has been done to move forward with it. So this motion is just asking for a full study to see if it's even feasible with the site on Dun Road and Shama Street. And if not, looking to just revitalize the park at Nippon and Sagamore Street to just include a half-court, not even a full-court. Um, it's time that we, as a community, really take a look at this because it's just, nothing's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23. Motion presented by Consul Garino-Suaya and McKenna, that the mayor request the appropriate department to conduct a feasibility study to explore the installation of a handicap accessible ramp at the front entrance of the Revere Public Library. If the addition of a ramp is found to be structurally or financially infeasible, that a feasibility study include an alternative solution such as the installation of an exterior elevator lift.
Consul's Garino-Suaya and McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, again, I've heard from several seniors in our community who travel to the libraries, um, in East Boston as well as Everett. Not because they prefer them, but because those buildings are handicap accessible. Our own Revere Public Library should be just as welcoming. That's why I've introduced this motion, along with Consul McKenna, requesting a feasibility study to explore adding a handicap accessible ramp in the front of the ramp, in the front of the entrance, at the front entrance, I'm sorry. Um, and if the ramp is impossible due to structural, financial constraints, or the fact that the, the library is historical, maybe just adding a handicap, um, elevator lift outside. There it is. "A modern inclusive city ensures that every resident, regardless of age or mobility, has full access to public spaces. Revere has the opportunity to show leadership, not just in infrastructure, but in values. I'm also willing to work with the library, Board of Trustees, to organize the fundraiser to help raise the money needed to make this important project a reality." I'll do that myself. Um, in conclusion, libraries are meant to be a gateway of knowledge, a gateway to knowledge, connection, and community for everyone. That includes our seniors and residents with mobility challenges. This is about equity, dignity, and ensuring that all residents can access the resources that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I totally agree with this. Um, for years, the library has been empty. And then, uh, with the new board and the millennials going to the library, um, it's taken off. So, um, every, now it's, it's full of people, um, reading books and, uh, looking at, uh, the computers and everything. So I think a handicap ramp or elevator lift would be a great addition to, um, this wonderful building. And I think a feasibility, feasibility study would be a great way to tackle the beginning of this. So, uh, I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Consul. Any other Consul's? All in favor, all opposed? Oh, Consul Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway. Um, definitely, fully in support of this one. Um, in this day and age, any city building should be accessible to all, all our residents. Um, great motion, definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other Consul's? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 24. Motion presented by Consul Cogliandro, that the mayor request the chief of police to provide additional traffic enforcement on Pic Carne Street, specifically for enforcing the no-heavy commercial vehicle restriction in the interest of public safety and damage to the roadway.
Consul Cogliandro.
Speaks for itself.
Thank you, Consul. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 25. Motion presented by Consul Garino-Suaya, that the mayor request the DPW, in the interest of responsible pet ownership, to install dogway stations along Rice Ave at the following locations: top of Witton Ave, top of Fowler Ave, side of Wadsworth Avenue, and on the beach side of the Seawall at Bateman Ave. Further, that the DPW coordinate weekly maintenance of these stations.
Consul Garino-Suaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dogway stations installed on Rice Avenue. What I want to, what I want to first say is that it wasn't supposed to be Rice Avenue only. I also included Mills Ave, but after speaking with the residents along Mills Avenue, they decided that they did not want them. So now, it is only going to be on Rice Avenue. Um, numerous complaints have come in from Point of Pines residents about dog waste and plastic bags being left along Rice Ave. Some of the bags are being thrown into the dunes. They are thrown into, hanging from trees. And also, you find them along Rice Avenue on people's steps. It's, it's totally unacceptable. And it's a health and enviromen- uh, environmental hazard. Um, the best way to address the issues is by installing these dogway stations. And I've already spoken to the mayor, and luckily, um, they did purchase some, and we can have them. My only request from the DPW, um, to the DPW is that I be present during these installations um, because they cannot be placed directly... They can't be placed directly in front of homeowners, beachfront properties, because then, then we'll have issues with that. So I want to be present, so they're placed along Rice Avenue strategically where the poles are, so it's not bothering anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other Consul's? Consul Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in support of this, however, dogway stations are expensive, and there's a cost to this. If we're talking about just putting a, a, a bag hanger or something, that's one thing. But dogway stations go anywhere from 500 to 2,000. And, and, what is it? 200? Well, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the, uh, dogway station you're proposing. If that's the case, then, if that's the case, I don't have a big problem with it.
Thank you, Consul. Any other Consul's? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Motion presented by Consul Novoselfsky, that the city council approve the following non-binding public advisory opinion question to be placed on the November 25 municipal ballot. Non-binding ballot question. The city council is seeking input from the voters to provide a sense of how they feel about recreational marijuana at, eight years after the prohibition was put in place. Question one. Shall the city council consider repealing the prohibition of recreational marijuana establishments as set forth in Section 9.18.010 of the Revere Revised Ordinances? A yes vote means you support repealing the prohibition, and no vote means you support leaving the prohibition in place.
Consul Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, uh, I feel at this time, I know when we had the vote earlier this year, there was a group that opposed it, and some of the counselors felt for those folks and voted no for it to fail. And I think we owe it to the rest of the city to hear from them. And I think the best way to do that is through a non-binding vote in the next election. And I think it's very important for various reasons. We have medical marijuana approved already in the city. And right now, there are no establishments that are utilizing it. But I think at this time, the city should move forward and see if we can get a positive vote, so we, as a city council, right after the next election, can decide on what the people wanted at the time. So, we will have time after the election, if there's a yes vote, for us to vote it in before we go sign-die. And if it's a no, then it's a dead issue. And I think it's time we get the whole city together to decide which way they want to go. It's very important for this city to open the door. Things have changed. When we put a prohibition in about 10 years ago, 11 years ago, at that time, nobody knew that much about it. But I think now, things have changed. There's a whole different mood out there on medical and recreational marijuana. And I think it's time that we move ahead and see whatever funds that we can get into this city. It's very, very important. Everybody's, we're all crying, we're losing help in the next budget from city employees, and we're scrounging for money to make this high school work. I think this will help things along. So I ask that the City Council approve, have this go on the ballot in this form. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have great respect for my fellow counselor, Councilor Novoselsky. Everyone, I won't say everyone, but I'd say 75% of the people I've heard from the last few months, and I've heard from more people about this than I did about the school. I had a residence contact me, they were nervous a pot shop was going to go on Squire Road. I had a residence contact me months later saying they heard rumors that a pot shop was going at the Popeye's site down the beach. They heard numerous rumors. I feel like we missed the boat. We can't take part in the community impact fee, which a lot of cities and towns benefited from when pot shops first came about. They were able to hire police officers, they were able to repair roads and do other things for their cities or towns. You know, my group is more or less young families. I teach, I coach T-ball, I speak to a lot of young parents, families of two, families of three. I speak to a lot of seniors, and I just feel like the majority of the people I speak to aren't in favor of bringing a pot shop to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with both points that were made by Councilor Novoselsky and Councilor Haas, which leads me to say there is no better way to hit all the demographics in the city. We heard from one group of people, I've heard, you know, 50/50 on the issue. And you know what? Again, I voted yes for the last ballot question that was before us, and I'm going to vote for it again, because I believe the people should have a say in this. Because I do feel that the city is split on this issue, and if they're not, guess what? This will tell us, and I'll know exactly how I'm voting. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Garino-Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I do agree that the people should decide on whether they want it on the ballot or not, like the term limit ballot question we discussed at the previous meeting, I can't vote in favor of this. I believe that the marijuana issue does deserve the accurate reflection in the will of the people. And placing it on the ballot during a non-major election, when the turnout is typically lower, won't provide a true representation of what the people want. We owe it to the public to ensure that any vote on this matter reflects the broader community participation, not just a small percentage of voters, and that's why I'm going to be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just like the last vote, I made my feelings known about term limits, but I was very willing to have it on the ballot. Marijuana, I've gone on record saying that I believe we should have dispensaries. And I think that should be on the ballot also. I mean, I understand what Counselor Swaye is saying. A very low turnout, I'm sure, is expected, but at least we get some indication. I mean, if it's close, 50/50, then we'd probably be in the same boat, wondering how the city feels. But if there's a big mandate, one way or another, you know, that would give us a good indication. So, and it doesn't cost anything, so I don't have any problem going on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have utmost respect for my colleague to my right here. However, lately, the reports on marijuana have come out that are so devastating. I heard Dr. Siegel just the other day talk about the effects of marijuana on people, mental illness, cancer, this, it didn't go the way people expected it to go, the recreational marijuana. So, I don't support any way of getting it back in the city here. My point is for the health of the children. Now, I'm an old guy, and everybody knows that. But I really believe that it is truly detrimental, and it's, the gamut, it runs the gamut. The reports come out that it's affected so many people negatively, that, you know, people, respected doctors are recommending that no one use it, period. Because it's so strong, and it's not just people smoking it, it's people taking the gummies and all the things that are, and it's really bad for your health. So that's my position on it, and so I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Permission to speak from the chair.
Thank you. I think everyone knows where I stand on this issue. I don't see a better way than to allowing it to go to the residents and let them decide. Once, again, studies have come out, both ways, financial reasons. The part about missing the boat, I can't agree with. And the reason I can't agree with that is, is that any amount of money, more than we're bringing in currently, is more than we're bringing in currently. So, there's not a loss there. If we can bring in funds to help us bring awareness to students, bring into athletic programs, go to sports and fields and stuff, then we have another source of revenue that comes into the city that we can use at our disposal. So I'm fully in favor of this going to the voters. Thank you very much. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it's the will of the body to have a roll call. Can we roll call the mo?
Roll call on the motion, Councilor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino-Swaya.
No.
No, Councilor Haas.
No.
No, Councilor Herramio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
No.
No, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky. Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
No.
No, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved. Calendar item number 27. Motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro, that the City Council hold a public hearing to revoke for cause Chapter 148 License Number 221-870-BROADWAY, granted June 14, 1926.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. As of this point, they have not paid for their Chapter 148 license this year. That's the main reason we're calling for a public hearing. I'm hoping that they will come before us and have a discussion. And while they're here, I would also like to discuss whether they are actually selling used cars on their property, because that would be completely against what they're supposed to be doing, as well as, I would like answers on why they continue to operate before 6:00 a.m. as they just promised us they would cease that behavior. This is Master Spray Auto on the special permit we just approved. They haven't picked up their special permit yet. So I am hoping that they'll come before the council to have a discussion on this publicly. And I know that the residents of Fisk Street tonight are watching this, and hopefully you guys can make it too. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city counselors? Okay, this will be ordered to a public hearing on June 23rd.
And late motion presented by Councilor Garino-Swaya, that the Mayor request the Department of Public Works and the Traffic Commission to assess and install a guardrail or appropriate safety barrier around the bend from Rice Avenue to Harrington Avenue. This motion follows yet another motor vehicle accident in which a car struck the resident's stone wall. This is not the first time such an incident has occurred at this location, and the pattern of crashes indicate an ongoing safety hazard requiring immediate detention.
Councilor Garino-Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Following a serious car accident which occurred Saturday on Rice Avenue, a vehicle crashed directly into a homeowner's stone wall, and it caused extensive property damage and injuring the driver. It is now undeniable that a guardrail must be installed at this location without any delay. The bend at Harrington and Rice Avenue ends, where Rice Avenue ends poses a severe and ongoing threat to public safety. It's a highly trafficked area where residents are constantly walking, children are running around through the streets, and people are walking their dogs, and parents are pushing baby carriages. It's a potential for a fatal incident, which is, the potential for a fatal incident is growing every single day, and it's just like, it scares me. As an immediate first step, I'm requesting that reflective tape and an arrow sign be applied to the rock at the bend by the end of this week. I have already spoken to the DPW and the Mayor, and they are both in favor of doing that immediately. However, it's not enough. I'm urging and requesting the city to install the permanent guardrail with reflectors or something that they feel would be best, so nobody would, this wouldn't happen again. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed?
Mr. President.
Speak your point, Counselor.
A point of personal privilege, please, before we end. So I want to tell the public about the physical visitors' passes. The parking department has moved forward and is now able to make physical visitors' passes for any resident who may already have a Senior Digital Visitor's Pass, 65 or older. Parking department will still continue to make all visitors' passes digitally upon application. Upon application, if a resident 65 or older is approved and receives a 2025 Senior Digital Visitor's Pass, they may request in writing to the parking department to have their digital visitor's pass converted into a physical visitor's pass. This request does need to be made in writing, whether in person or via email address to the parking department. These requests, if approved, may take one to three business days to process. Residents, when approved, will be issued yellow visitor's passes similar to the ones used in the years past. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and that closes tonight's meeting, and we'll see everyone on June 16th. Have a great week.